All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:01. We will call it the meeting to order 6:01. For the for City Council. Greg, if you want to call to order P and Z?
Yes, at 6:01, we'll call this meeting to order.
All right, thank you. This is a joint meeting of the Duncanville City Council, special meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. On November the 9th, 2020, as we said, calling for order 6:01. In accordance with an order of the Office of the Governor issued March 16th, 2020, extended by the Governor on June 12th, 2020. City Council for the City of Duncanville may conduct city council's special meetings by video conference. And in doing so on this date to advance public health, limiting face-to-face meetings in an effort to slow the spread of the COVID-19 pandemic. This is an open meeting and citizens were permitted to provide comments, however, there are none. So looking at the agenda, we're going to move from item number one, skip item number two, and going to item number three. City Council will deliberate the following items. However, no vote or action by council will be taken. Item A is zoning ordinance update workshop with Freezer Nichols to discuss possible revisions to policy directions, garages and carports, and any additional questions for any of the following. Article two zoning districts, article three land uses, article four development standards, article seven definitions. And we have consultants, Dan Harrison and Erica Craycroft. One note, Patrick Harvey, our City Council member at large, is not able to attend. And Councilmember Johnette Jameson is going to be a little late. Don't know exactly when she'll join, but we're gonna go ahead and get started. So with that, Dan, you're ready to go?
Yes, sir, and I will start sharing my screen if the host can enable my my screen sharing of a PowerPoint. And Athena, who who would I be asking to enable the screen share?
Kristen or Tracy? Can you assist?
I'm working on it. It shows that you actually have the access to share your screen. You shouldn't be turned off. You should be able to go ahead and just share. You're not able to, I think it?
No, it keeps giving me the host disabled participant screen share. Erica, any chance that you can? You can share the PowerPoint?
I will try.
Mayor Gordon?
I I get the same message.
Yes, sir.
Participant screen sharing.
While we're waiting for the screen share, can can we do a P and Z roll calls? Because I don't know who's all on the call.
Oh, certainly. Go right ahead.
Ms. Culber?
Yeah.
Ms. Broom?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez, I believe is going to be off the call. Is that correct, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, he's not in the meeting, present.
And then Pina?
He's also absent.
Okay, so we have a call?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Okay, Daniel, we've got your shared screen up.
All right, and and I think someone at the city is sharing it for me, so we'll we'll just partner and I'll just say I'll just say next slide, please, when we move on to the next one. So let's go ahead and next slide, please. You know us from the previous two meetings that that and of course, from the means before that, but at our recent means it's we're with Freezer Nichols, but for everyone who hasn't listening out there. My name is Daniel Harrison and also on the phone call is Erica Craycroft. We are the two primarily primary people responsible for developing the draft. Next slide, please. And the agenda for today is we're going to do just a real quick reminder of the process. Talk about the remaining policy question that we have and do a little little question and answer. We really want to also talk about the virtual open house discussion and get your get your thoughts on that. And then we'll talk about next step. So really, the purpose for today is to identify the revisions needed prior to presenting the draft at the open house, the virtual open house that we'll be having. Next slide, please. And here's an overview of the process. Next slide, please. We talked before about phase one and phase two. That's really developing the draft where we are now in phase three, where we're finding it. And moving on for the adoption of the zoning ordinance and map. We had two joint workshops in October and of course, we're having one right now. Our next meeting after today is having a virtual open house and we are tentatively scheduled to start that on November 19th, that is next Thursday. And that would run for two weeks for everyone to visit the website, participate in that and and provide us their feedback. So that that two-week period for the virtual open house would would close on December 3rd, as you see on the screen. And then we'd have a joint workshop amongst City Council and P and Z to look at the input from the open house. And after we talk about that input, we would have a joint public hearing moving forward on the recommendations and and having that hearing on the text and the map. And then after that, after we go through the public hearing and in the adoption process, the individual rezonings could be considered is the the plan. Next slide, please.
Quick question, Daniel?
Yes.
On that virtual open house, is that hosted off of your technology or is that hosted off of city technology?
That would be ours. That'd be our technology that we'd have on there because we are going to have it with it's still an option we could do either, but we were anticipating having having our Zoom Zoom account do that. And or we could we could use the cities.
It's fine. You go ahead and do it. I was just curious. And and it's a 24/7 access during those during those dates?
Correct, correct, because hopefully we we're hoping that, why, yes, everyone's home a lot right now, but during during also the Thanksgiving holidays. This would be something that people could participate in and and see that. So yes, anytime of day, they'd be able to go to the website and and provide their comments.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
Good question. Next slide, please. So our our policy question, next slide. If you remember, our two last meeting was really going through a lot of different policy questions that we talked a lot about, different items. Next slide, please. But one that we had at our last meeting, we still had some discussion on and we needed to discuss a little bit more. And that was garages and should garages be required for all single-family homes? Next slide, please. And so the policy question we're we're trying to discover tonight in the direction is, you know, should garages be required for single-family homes? And we were talking with staff and we're thinking, one way we could also rephrase this question is, you know, what parking accommodations should be required for each housing type? So if we're looking at a single-family, a regular single-family home, what should be the parking accommodations for that? Or a zero lot line home, a duplex or a town home? Next slide, please. So we're also talking about when these standards for garages or parking would apply. And this would be for new homes or home expansions greater than than 20%. And this would not apply to an existing home. Next slide, please.
Question, question?
Yes, sir.
I know this is way down deep in the weeds. Go on back, please, just that one slide. So the the 20% expansion, that would always be ventilated space or what if somebody wanted to add 20% of space but not ventilated?
Well, if we're if we're talking air-conditioned space, we we can definitely clarify what that would mean. 20% is is sort of a good standard if we need to look at, if I'm expanding a home more than 50%, should these standards kick in? Do we want to keep it to new homes only if we had any existing structure there in the past? It's basically grandfathered. So I I think there's some some policy discussion we can have on whether we think 20% is the right number to kick in the standard or whether it should be higher on that. And then we could definitely define whether it's air-conditioned space or total building building space.
What's what's the norm? I mean, 20% seems okay to me. I don't know about anybody else, but what what's where did the 20% come from? Is that some norm that you're or baseline you're working from?
It it's typically when we look into non-conforming structures, when when and non-conforming, that's just this sort of sounds like like a bad word or or something because it's non. It simply just means it doesn't meet meet the current standard. Now, non-conforming structures occur all the time because sometimes standards change. So the question becomes, if if I'm making small changes to a building, do I really need to conform to the standard? It it can be difficult at times. So trying to set a threshold of once you get to you're doing, you know, a fifth or a quarter of of a of a enlarging something that much, you get to the point where you you can accommodate some of these changes. So 20% is a is a typical threshold for that type of compliance on there, but it does range. Sometimes that can be greater at 50% if if that's what the the policy direction that we think is most most appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. And so we just wanted to talk about some some terminology because some of these terms can can be a little bit confusing at times. So here on the screen, you'll see on the top left, two-car garage. And so you can see that there's there's now that could be one door. This example shows it as two doors, but it's a two-car garage. The one in the middle, we have our one-car garage. So you see that's more of a a townhouse-type product where you're having one garage for each unit. The port of cachet is what we have in the in the top left and you can see that's integrated into the structure there. At the bottom, we have a typical carport that you'd see built in this example. It's in front of the house. And then we have just paved spaces only, so no carport or garage or port of cachet. Next slide, please. Sort of our typical two-car garage, it's it's a it's a requirement that a lot of cities have for single-family development. Sometimes you have two doors, like you see on the screen to the left. Sometimes it's just one, one large door that you'd have. So this would be our two typical two-car garage development you'd see. Next slide, please. When we move into our one-car garage, it is more typical for duplex or townhomes. Sometimes it's one space enclosed plus one unenclosed space, so the spot right in front of the garage itself is considered the unenclosed space. We have a lot of these existing in Duncanville right now. Very common in in some of our older housing stock to have a one-car garage. And so here's just a couple of visual examples that we can see how that would look. Next slide, please. With the port of cachet, it's a couple of examples that we have on the screen there. It's really structurally or aesthetically integrated with the home. It continues the roof design and the building materials. It connects typically a pedestrian entrance. It's the way you would would enter winter the enter the home, either in the the main part from the street or or from the side. It's rather, there's just an architectural definition right there. It's it's basically a a place to, of course, drive in, get out of, of course, in this example, since it's an older architectural term, you know, a horse and carriage is what these were originally for. But of course, a motor vehicle and you're protected from from the weather to get into the dwelling. Next slide, please.
Councilmember Cooks has his hand raised.
Just just a just a quick question. When you're looking at these examples, and hello, everyone. When you're looking at these examples, these are just, these are stock pictures and not Duncanville home pictures. Is that correct?
No, no, it's a mix. It's a mixture of both on there. And I think, Erica, are these two on the on the screen, are these both from Duncanville?
This is off, this is Greg. This is off of Softwood, sir. Here and there. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because when we're when we're reviewing the photos and putting this together, we we did a good mixture mixture of both on there. I'd I'd say at least half, half of the photos are from.
And so the last the last ones you just looked at, the the slide before here, that was not, was that Duncanville?
Adam, too, are from Duncanville. The top one is a stock photo.
And did you do anything at all in the Hollywood Park area as any of your examples?
I am not positive on that, but we can we can double-check and and what you know.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. This is my question.
Councilmember Anderson is waving his hand.
I just want to, I just want to say, you know, make note that on this one-car garage, these they're called, it's called a snout garage. And, you know, just about anywhere around the country, a lot of cities are saying you can't do this anymore. So you can see that sometimes, sometimes putting a garage in can be very ugly and look really bad. In this example here, and we have that mark in Hollywood Park, you know, we have some of these where the garage sticks out further than the front porch. You know, and it doesn't, it doesn't do anything to invite, you know, this is a, this is a complex situation. You know, these things don't do anything to invite the pedestrian or people into the house. You know, a house, a home in a in a quality, you know, a quality of life type city that we're striving for should be inviting with the front door of the house. And these are not. They're they're basically car parking spaces sticking out. And I just want you to note this, that sometimes garages are ugly. And they're not, they're not always effective. I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to to we're trying to make the city look better and do better. And that's, so I just want everybody to be aware of that, that just because it's got a garage doesn't make it look better.
That's all. And I, I was a bit, councilman, but I I guess I was still looking at the challenges that people have that when they don't have it and how the complaints I receive for wanting to even have it and not using it. So that's why I was referring to a particular area period when I talk about garages.
And and I think we'll get into, we have a recommendation table here and just a couple of slides, which I think we'll start start answering some of those questions, but but all great points. Next slide, if if we're if I think we got most of the questions right now. That was just an example of port of cachet. Of course, here's just examples of carports that you can see, different sort of little bit different designs, different looks, whether you know, front of the house, rear of the house. Next slide, please. Here is some paved spaces only. So going to the the concept of maybe a garage is not appropriate in in all places. Do we still want to have a paved space for the vehicles to park off-street? So here's an example of just having a paved space for for parking here on the left. And then here on the right is typically, you'd see there there'd be a paved space there as well. Next slide, please. So just, we had talked a little bit about last time, what are other nearby cities doing as far as recommendations? Of course, currently, we don't have garage requirements in the city, so that's the current standard right now. Cedar Hill, their parking requirements are to have two enclosed spaces plus two paved spaces required. Carports are allowed in their two-acre zoning districts. De Soto has two enclosed spaces required only in their one-acre minimum lot zoning district. Arlington has two-car garage required for all single-family duplexes and townhomes. Carports are allowed in there, also one-acre zoning district. And in Grand Prairie, two-car garage required for for all single-family homes. Next slide, please. So the recommendation table that we have here and as first to to talk about here is on this table, you see, you have, starting at the top left there, you have select one. And so we have a couple of options there for either selecting a two-car garage, a one-car garage, a port of cachet, doing a carport. That last option is two unenclosed spaces only. In these situations, we'd also require two unenclosed spaces on the property. So that would be that that parking pad for two unenclosed. So if we're selecting this this first column here, it'd be a two-car garage plus two unenclosed spaces. So if we look at the table and you would just have to meet one of these, one of these checkmarks. So if I was a traditional single-family home, I could have a I could have a two-car garage, as long as I had two unenclosed spaces. I could do a one-car garage. I could do a port of cachet. For carports, we said that would be a SUP requirement because we'd want to take a look at that, make sure it was integrated into the into the structure well and everything. And so carports could require an SUP. So under traditional single-family home, you'd have those four options that you get to choose from. Zero lot line would be the same as a single-family home. You'd have, you'd have four options to to choose from, whether you're doing two-car, one-car, a port of cachet, or a carport. When we get to the duplex, we basically, you have all the same options, plus you get the the last option there, just to do two unenclosed spaces only. So you could have no garage or port of cachet or carport in the duplex. Then for for the townhome, we have it shown as either having a two-car garage or a one-car garage, also with the the two unenclosed spaces. So that's the that's the layout that that we're recommending right now. Of course, meeting tonight is to talk about what do we think about these types of standards? Other conditions I just wanted to to make a note of is there on the left. There's no conversions. One of the standards we'd have is no, no future conversions of the garage to a living area, require the unenclosed spaces, so they will not be blocking the sidewalk or or in the right-of-way. So all that parking would be done, of course, on-site or on the property. And then carports and detached garages are are subject to the accessory structure requirement. So if I was going to have, you know, I couldn't have three carports because typically I'd be limited to two accessory structures. Or if I already had two accessory structures on my property, then I couldn't do a carport because that would be exceeding that limit. So we do, we do attach a carport or a detached garage as an accessory structure or or view that as an accessory structure.
Mayor Gordon has his hand up.
Yeah, this is purely a hypothetical question and maybe, Monty, you could help me with this. I'm just thinking about the possibility of a townhome development. And looking at some townhome developments, not necessarily here in our city, but some of them have garages, one and two-car garages, but then there are detached covered parking spaces, what you see like in an apartment complex. How do those come into play? Do they come into play or is it even a a topic to be discussed? I'm not sure.
Well, there there there's a couple, couple of options we'd have with with that that townhome product. You would you would see where where they're all on their their own property, their own individual lots, where we'd be tying the the parking to that lot. You could have a situation where you have more of a condominium-type development, where maybe there's a it's one property, but it's really a condo ownership, so there could be covered parking.
That's more of what I'm thinking of, like, there's four condominiums and they're all attached to each other or two or three. That's it's more of what I'm thinking of, Daniel, that particular configuration.
That's one of the things we can, we can take a look at. Typically, we probably, if it was all under one ownership, because typically, most of the the townhome develop development we probably could foresee would would be individual parcel ownership. But it it could definitely be one, one property on there. So in that situation, you know, we'd be taking a look at do we have, you know, the one garage standard or if it's a carport situation? You know, are they meeting that correct ratio on there? And so that's part of the part of going through the SUP. We can make sure that on that property that here for unit one, there's going to be a covered carport for that or or a garage.
Okay, Monty, do you have any experience or examples?
Yeah, I do. In fact, we built something like this out at at Thorntree on Westmoreland, if you know, right across the street from from the church and stuff over there on Westmoreland. Those are development I did. But where you, where I think Daniel's right on on an SUP on this and a case-by-case. And I think that with this limited amount of land as we we have, I think townhomes are, should be in demand and we should be trying to build townhomes. But I also think it's a, it's a very good question, Mayor, because the garages make them look so ugly sometimes. And so I think, you know, on a case-by-case, depending on the shape of the land and and how you would, you know, how you would do it. I think that, but detached garages really make good. In fact, the railroad flats, part of the railroad flats is zoned that way. Those are townhomes. And part of that zone where you can have some detached parking from from the unit, so the street front looked good. So you could keep the street frontage looking good and not having those garages sticking out. I, Daniel, I wondered if if there's any way that we could if if there's not a place in there that we could have on any house that's built that the garages don't stick out past the front porch unless it goes through an SUP or something. I mean, that's getting into design. I know that's getting maybe too deep into design, but I mean, I think this is an important thing when we're looking at, when we're looking at infill and you know, small amounts of land that we have left, that the garages are paid particular attention to. If you'll notice, in some of our neighborhoods, you have some of these historic neighborhoods where a garage is in the back where you drive through and it looks really good. I call it the Happy Days Garage, you know. And then then a new house comes along and they just build the garage sticking right out front, which doesn't look good. And so I think it's a good question, Mayor, and I think for sure, townhomes ought to be, you know, that garage situation could be on a case-by-case, whether it's whether it's enclosed. And I see a carport also, by the way, it's not one of them tin sheds setting out in the driveway. The carport's more like a space built into the house that you plan. It just doesn't have a garage door on it. But it's built into the, it's built into the house, so it looks, so it looks right. It's not a shed out in the out in the driveway you pull under.
So should should we add SUP for carport with townhome here?
Carport with town SUP. I think, I think so, because I think you might want to encourage that in certain conditions. Again, it's, again, you know, I hope for this document would would cause us to do good design, not bad design. And so I think so. I think.
Let me, let me ask somebody a question. Monty, but the the homes you're talking about that you build on Westmoreland, those have garages and they look extremely well.
They do.
So you're saying that you would do that?
Well, you were forced, we were forced to put two-car garages on little bitty townhomes. But but you've noticed each of the townhomes in the, the way they were done, they have two separate doors and the porches are out equal to the front doors. And so the, so the townhomes kind of fit back in. What the easiest thing to be would would have been to do was stick a big old garage right out front and then drive, walk down a hall, like an outdoor hallway into a front door. Yeah, we were forced to put two, two, it would have looked better, I think, if it didn't have, if there were carports over there, built into the house.
But I bet they were sold less as well, though, because those are, those are all filled up. They look extremely nice. So I liked the design that you did that they forced you to do. And so the mayor's question.
No, they didn't. They, they, they forced us to two, two, two car garages. We, we did the design to make them because I couldn't stand the way the garages look like that one picture that we had with the garage sticking way out. And that's all you could see. If you notice those over there, you can really, you can see the front porch is easy. And it had two front, it had two garages. We made them put two garage doors in instead of one big two car garage. And so the, what they forced us to do made us work harder to make them look right. That's what I'm saying.
Ms. Betty has her hand up and I saw Mayor Proton's hand up also.
I was going to say that in, there's a word, I, I, I don't know Daniel if I'm using the right word. But in, in the building code in Dallas, we passed was that a garage could not. Come out further than the house. The thing we did, what we call it, y'all can help with the word is recess garage or garage on the back. But a garage cannot stick out further than the very edge of the house. It has to be set back. I don't know the word that we use because I'm, you know, my mind got caught with, but, but, but it is in the building code. You cannot have a garage that comes out, you know, past the house lines. I agree with Monty saying you, we should have something.
We, we could definitely have a garage setback to prevent the situation where the garage would be in front, front of the door. And to prevent those snout houses on there. So, so I, I think, I think we can add something. And we can even look and if we need to have some, some variances even for the front building setback. So if we're bringing the house a little bit forward, maybe the, and the garage is going a little bit further back, maybe there's some, some flexibility there.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be in the rear? What about the rear of it? Where it's not in the front, where, you know, where it's noticeable in the front. What about if we have it in the back like that? Because there are some garages that's just a tad bit from the regular. You know, position of the house and, and the, in the rear of it.
There's a couple of things when we move the garage to, to the, to the rear of the building. One, it sort of eliminates how the effect of, on the street frontage and how the neighborhood looks when driving down the street. Now, if it's an alley access. We can have a situation where we do need the parking pad. When, when you turn into the driveway, you could have. Make sure that the garage is, we're going to have our two unenclosed spaces back there. There could be some other situations where we just may need to ride it where in those older situations where you have maybe a front entry driveway. But the garage wraps around or the driveway wraps into the backyard where the garage is. Then you could really put, put your garage anywhere in the backyard and have some, some flexibility on that. But when we move the garage to the back of the building, it, it, it lessens the need for, for that effect that it's going to do. On the street on there. But we could have, we could have garages in the back with alleys and could also have garages in the back with still that front entry type home.
Mr. Beck Burnett had a comment.
Thank you, mayor. I, I was going to go along the same line in terms of design and that line and agree with what Monty was saying. And that well, and but, but also I was going to say, and I'm glad that Betty and. Or Ms. Colbreth and Mr. Shaw did, because I want to hear from P and Z a little bit more too. Thank you.
Well, it definitely sounds like, like the look and feel from the front of the home. Looking from the street at the home and the garage design is important. We can, we can work on some garage setbacks standards to make sure that we're going to prevent a snout house. I think, based upon comments I'm hearing, that, that would be a desirable thing and we can, we can draft that. And have you guys take, take a look at that. And we can also have. Some standards, of course, if it's going to wrap around the side of the house and. Have the garage in the back and a front entry product and also for an alley, alley product on there. Because one of the things that you see on this table is we're still requiring two unenclosed spaces. Because the conversation that, that we sort of had last time was. Just because we're requiring this garage doesn't mean it's taking the, the vehicles off the street. You know, it can be used just as storage. It can be used as, as a lot of stuff. That's not for cars. So the two unenclosed places are really trying to get, have a place for that vehicle to get, get off, off the street.
Daniel, is this kind of a detail that we're talking about? And I'm sorry, I'm sorry I brought it up because it's got wrapped around the axle just a little bit. But is the kind of detail that you're describing going to stall the process or is it going to be incorporated with not too much trouble?
I, I, I think it's going to be incorporated with not too much trouble. I, I think adding that, that setback requirement for the garages is not a problem because we have the front setbacks. And so, you know, let me talk with staff and then, and just to see if, if we want to have any exception to maybe. Allow for some, either having the building come a little bit further, you know? If, if there's trying to be a trade off and be flexible because we know we're going to have infill and redevelopment just to, you know? Run that idea by them first and then, then if that works at the staff level, bring it, bring it back, back to you. But I, I think we can make these changes not a problem.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure we can keep moving along. Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. And here we're just, I, I, I know we've had a lot of talk and so not necessarily all the, all the examples here. But just, we'll go through these real quick. Just. Garage conversions, if, if we adopt the standards as they are, they would be prohibited. So it would be. A future garage conversion, of course, an existing garage conversion stays, no changes to that, but future would be prohibited. Next slide, please. Here's just another example because once the garage is converted, you still may have a carport on the next side. Because the cars are still, still, still parked there. So this is just one example. Once again, this would be prohibited in the future. Next slide.
Wait a minute, Daniel.
Yep, yep, yep. Sorry.
Didn't we have some discussion or some comment last time that can a city actually. Preclude a homeowner from doing certain things to their home in terms of their property such as converting a garage? I think we have some legal discussion that we couldn't, we couldn't do that. Be illegal for us to say you can and can't do this to your garage.
If, if, if we're having. We, we did talk about that at, at the last time and say, you know, moving forward. No one would have to convert anything, but, but the question that I think you're getting at is can we still regulate what they have? You, you still have to have a, a garage in there. And then. You know, for, because we don't have a garage standard right now. So no one's been in violation of, of converting, converting their garage in the future. And so, but moving forward, the standard would be to, you would still have to maintain a, a, a two car garage. You don't have to park a car in there and, because you could still store all your. Equipment and other things, but you'd have to have a two car accessible garage.
Yeah. Mayor, if I may, I think the discussion revolved around, you know, we had a discussion quickly about deed restrictions. And I think where Daniel's going is what we couldn't do is like he mentioned prohibit how they use the garage. But it didn't speak to garage conversions. As a matter of fact, we have been on the books where you can convert a garage. To living space, but you have to meet certain conditions as far as the width of the driveway leading up to. That area so that it can accommodate more cars since you're, you're obviously eliminating the garage itself. So that's where I think that conversation stemmed from last time.
Okay, I, I seen, remember.
Attorney is on, on this.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, Bob's, Bob's available that it was tried in some city and it was challenged in the chat and, and they lost. That you, you know, it's ill, a city cannot tell you what you can and can't do to that extent with your own property. That's, that's why I'm bringing it up again.
Yeah, and, and a lot of those instances, what happens is they get converted and they don't get a building permit. They don't have, there's ingress and egress requirements and window requirements and it gets to be quite extensive. And we can address maybe some of that through the 20% increase in livable space that Daniel talked about earlier. So.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Back to the, on the, on the example here, we just showing some examples of how the carports could look and be permitted. Next slide, next slide, please. Just more examples of different designs for carport, of course, some could be. On the left, this would be in the rear of the property and the other one more of a front, front entry product there. Next slide, please. Then of course, you know, may, maybe still in a, in a front yard. But then once again, we, these are considered accessory structures. So there would be a limit to how many, how many you could do. Next slide, please. Just some more examples of just the variations that you will see in, in and about a town. Next slide. Here, here's a good example of a situation that would be prohibited. There are not two unenclosed parking spaces provided here because you would not be able to park a vehicle behind the garage here without being in the. In the right of way here. So that would be one example of a, of a prohibited design. Next slide. And then here's just a example of a permitted by right, port of cachet connected to the main structure. Has a bit of a roof. It's integrated and there's also a pedestrian entrance. Next slide, please.
Hold on, Daniel, can I, can I say something?
Yes, yes.
I'm having trouble with my camera. So can, can you see me?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, I, I'm having trouble with my camera. I'm sorry. But I was thinking on that garage, you know? Back to a, a townhome, which is likely to happen here like that one, you know? And I've seen these conditions where they're very attractive, you know, these kind of conditions. But the garages have to be used as, as parking places. Again, back to that question. I mean, this becomes a really attractive place to put a car on a rear entry. If it was, even if that didn't have garage doors on it, you know, if it was just a, a roof on it. And to prohibit that, to me, might help us having, we're wanting some density in some of our places. We want some density. I'm reading from the comp plan. I mean, we want some density in townhomes are very often this way. And I, I know we can't, I've got some, I've seen some developments where, where the garage has to be used as a parking place. Because that is the parking code where the, you know, that doesn't mean somebody's going to do it, but you know, that's, then that's what the code says. What are your thoughts about that?
Well, the, the issue, I, I, I think that you hit on well is when we get into, into our denser, denser areas. And how are we going to accommodate, accommodate the cars on there? Because, because one line of thinking is. Cars are going to be there. They're going to, you know? Be congested on the street. They, you know, we'd like to try to accommodate these on property. I'd say sort of the counterpoint to that is, you know, in, in some of our neighborhoods, well, maybe not everyone's needing. Two car, two car garages. If everything's a little bit more walkable and, and stuff like that, maybe not everyone's going to. Really have a need for the maintenance of two cars and working from home and, and, and things like that. So, so I think sort of the, the, the other end to this, this topic is, you know? Do we think this is going to be needed in the future? So, so there's sort of a balance that we sort of are trying to achieve with this. When we get to the denser. Type developments and I'm not talking extremely dense, but townhome development, where are we going to? Where, where, where will those cars park? And you know, if we have a garage, they may or may not use it. So trying to have that two unenclosed spaces would be sort of where we're trying to, trying to make sure that we. Have, have that to just get the cars off and, and so.
Tony Hager has his hand up.
Yeah, Mayor Council, one of the things that I want you to think about as Daniel goes through this, that. As of right, you would not want to allow the slide that's up. And maybe we address this either through an SUP or if we have the right kind of product that comes out. On this really in Monty's standpoint, we can always change the ordinance. But what you don't want to do is try to answer every conceivable thing that may happen. As, as time goes on, there'll be different new kinds of products out there for, for living. And what we can imagine today may be different than what actually happens tomorrow. So this will be, you know, I think. If we can address it either through an SUP or if we need to, we can come back and always amend this to accommodate. The, the things that, that will change over time. So. Don't sit here and try to imagine everything that can happen or the document itself becomes unwieldy. And we'll address things as they come forward in, in the future. But then that's just to help you all through this.
Yeah, and I was, I, I was going to say that too. What Bob just said is I agree. So some of these conditions are so, they're, they are complex and they're specific. And sometimes, sometimes they, things have to be designed specifically for a site. And I would just say that our minds are kept open for good design when it doesn't work just like our zoning, if, just like our zoning says. But I, I agree totally with what Bob just said.
Mr. Remy had a comment.
Yes, sir. As Councilman Cooks mentioned previously about Hollywood Park. While this picture is not, you know, from Hollywood Park, a very similar condition exists in Hollywood Park with the two car garages. And driveways that are not long enough to accommodate a car off street. And the challenge we have is perpetually complaints about the, the parking on. On the sidewalk, parking, just not enough parking in general. And, and that would be, that's, you know, what I see is the, you know, dealing with, with that. From a congestion or, you know, public input to us, you know, when they're, when they're frustrated. So again, I think it's got to be a combination of if, do we require it? What, what kind of constraints? Do we put in, you know, does it require a wider road or something? I don't. Maybe I don't know if that's part of this, Daniel, but you know, that's what we're dealing with today is. An issue of, of, you know, not driveways that are not long enough. And the garages are just holding stuff, I guess, or they're making choices to not use the garage. But it manifests itself in, you know, significant amount of congestion in. Especially in Hollywood Park. For Councilman Cook's comment.
Yeah, I, I think based upon the comments I've heard so far is, and, and we'll, we'll get back to the table here in just a second. But you know, adding an SUP requirement for the carport is, is the note I'm having to talk about. And the second one would be adding, adding a garage setback. So I think that would get to some of the flexibility for the townhome. So that way we could really evaluate when a product or development would come through. That we could address those concerns about, hey, there's a fire lane here and they won't be able to park here and, and this and that. And just take a look at that at the SUP level. But we could add SUP to the townhome. Box under carport and we'll, we'll see that table here in just a second again. Next, next slide, please. And then just example, we have this example of port of cachet. Next slide. Once again, so, so different, different ways that that could look, much larger lot home on there. But it's connected to the main structure, has a sloping roof. Next slide. Here's more of the most typical example that you, you'd see in there, really connected same building materials of a port of cachet. Next, next slide. And once again, just, just another example, you can see on the left there. Next slide, please. So going back to this table, that's what I was referencing. So if you look under that bottom row that says townhome. I think based upon what, what we talked about today, we can add SUP under carport. So if someone was wanting, because remember when we get to the townhome level. You know, it was saying, you know, those two options right there. But I think if we add that SUP element, it would provide some flexibility to look at that. And then once again, we'll, we'll look into adding some, making sure. it would provide some flexibility to look at that. And then once again, we'll, we'll look into adding some, making sure that the snout house design is prohibited in that having, we have a, that garage setback as well. From the, from the front door, from the front, front of the building. Next slide please. So with that, are there any other, a lot of good feedback? Are there any other questions or comments that we have about the parking? Okay. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I, I want to ask real quick. So would you explain to me what you just said about the, you're allowing carports with an SUP on townhomes?
Correct. If, if you go back, one, one slide please to the table. Okay. So yes, here, what we would be doing if the bottom row where it says townhome, we'd be adding an SUP to that based upon the comment. So in a couple of those examples, you saw the full, full garage in there. And so we, this would be a, a place where it come to the council to be reviewed to say if there is a situation, because there could be some situations, let's say we were talking about an example where it was all, it was more of a condo ownership and, you know, it was one big property and that maybe the parking was off somewhere else. So you'd have separate either garages or carports off somewhere else. This would just be an opportunity to take a look at that. If it was on, the other type of product would be if it's on an individual lot. And so we could, the SUP would be for that, you know, that one unit on that one individual lot. And that, that would go through the SUP process for anyone to get, any, anyone to get carport has to go through the SUP.
Okay, so we've never had carports before and now we're changing it to make carports.
Yes, and, and we didn't, before, we also didn't have any, any, because, because we didn't have any parking, any garage requirements in there. And so when we looked at, you know, okay, so now we're gonna have off-street parking requirement and garage requirement. And we talked a lot about last time that, you know, well, hey, no one's gonna be parking, well, not no one, but a lot of people aren't going to be parking their cars in the garage, even if we require a garage to be built as part of the structure. So what are, what are some of the other things that we're doing to try to get the vehicles off, off the street and onto property and out of, out of the right of way? So, so that's what the standard is, is, is trying to do and the ways to accommodate that off-street parking.
And you were saying that before we did not require a two-car garage?
Correct. There, there's no, there's no enclosed parking requirement now.
Now? But there was. So we're going away with all this?
No, no, there, there was, there was no, previously or that it, before this draft of the zoning ordinance, there, there is no garage parking requirement in Duncanville. So the, the house could be built without, out of garage.
And now we're requiring a garage?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and then the carport is with an SUP?
Yes, it, it could be, it could be a flexible option, but we wouldn't want to make it just, just by right because there, there's so many, so many ways that potentially go wrong. Yeah, yeah. So it would have to go to the council to be approved.
Yeah, and so what's the process when people, they do it anyway, because there's a lot of people that don't go and submit?
Well, then that's when it would go in, into the code enforcement, it could be a, lots of different ways to, to probably enforce it, but you can, if it's in the zoning, we can enforce it as a, as a zoning violation in, in fine. But, but, but there's different options that we'd have to do, but.
But that would need to go through the process for a carport?
Correct, and come to council.
Okay.
Hey, Daniel, I just have, I have my hand raised here, but I just had one little question for you. And that is, when, in the future, as you look at the pictures throughout your presentation, would you, would you consider using more, and I know you say you did use some, use more designs, what we're currently looking at in Duncanville? And I know many people, often you keep hearing me talk about one particular area and it's not really about the one particular area of Hollywood Park. Because every time I ask questions around that, I keep hearing years and years ago, this was a poor design, there's nothing we can do now. And so that's clearly why we're doing this today, because we won't be around, we will. Some won't be around to see what this looks like years to years from now. And so though I love looking at the future, I'm also trying to avoid some hiccups we had in the past that others will have to live with. And so when you, when you're looking at the, when you're looking at the presentation of pictures, please show us, when you say this is unacceptable, show a real life, a real life picture of what we're looking at in today's environment where others can really get a feel. Even as Monte gave an example of the ones in, on Wintergrain by Thorn Tree, even pushing those back, you have, well, a better picture in our mind of how it looks going forward. So just wanted to kind of add that because I, it's not about a particular neighborhood, but it's about what I keep hearing when I, when I talk about others about what's going on here. It's just poor design, there's nothing you can do after a poor design has been installed.
Also, on your no SUP required for carport setback at least 10 feet behind, front of the building face. So you're talking about where the front of the house is? Because buildings sometimes are in a different place than where they started the house.
So if it was, yes, because, because you're right, the house doesn't necessarily have to be built to the front setback. So what this is trying to say is if, yeah, yeah, the front of the building and if there was maybe a carport along the side or something like that, what we're really focused on is, is the, the look from the street and how that looks. So, so the way we have it, yes, the way we have it currently listed is if it was back more than 10 feet, it, it wouldn't require the, the SUP.
Well, I don't know that I'd like that because 10 feet behind, you're saying the front of the house?
Correct. The, the, like, you, you'd have the front wall of the house that, that faces the street and then 10, 10 feet beyond that.
And it would have to be, when you say front building's face, you're talking about front door, front of house?
Most normally, yes, yes. There, I'm trying to think if there could be some house design where maybe they have the bedroom up front. But, so it'd be the very front of the structure. So, because sometimes you could have the, maybe a bedroom in the front and the, and the front doors around the side of the house or something like that, or, or like further setback, but it'd be the front of the building on there, but.
It would have to be 10 feet behind the front of, of the building, not the building line?
Correct. Be behind the building, not the building line. The front of the building.
I think we're gonna have to be real clear about that because.
Okay.
You know, there's different building lines.
We can, we can, if, if we think we need to be a little bit more just, just everyone come in who's, who's doing a carport, you know, so we, we could, we could remove the, the asterisk on there and, and that'd be one thing we could consider. If that, if that seems like it would be.
I think so. I think so. They need to come in and get the code person to look at their, either look at it physically or look at their building plans or whatever. Because we get all sorts of hodgepodge.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at, at removing that asterisk there. All right. Next, so a, any other thoughts about, about any of the, the parking, carports, garages discussion? Or move on to talking about the open house, virtual open house?
Okay, Daniel, let's move on.
Okay, next slide please. Okay, so jumping here to phase three, of course, that's where we are in the project and we're having our workshop today. So next Thursday is when we want to have the virtual open house start and then it'd be open for two weeks. And so on next Thursday, we would have a Zoom meeting where people can watch and, and hear the presentation. What happens after the meeting is over, we'll put the presentation online so people can either watch the whole thing. We're actually gonna cut it up in sections in case someone just wants to skip the intro and get right to the recommendations. We're gonna have that available. So what we do is, is the plan would be to advertise on social media on the 16th, which is of course next week, but Monday, and then provide notice in the newspaper on the 18th to publish on the 22nd. Because that's, like I said, it's gonna go on for two weeks, so it'll be in the newspaper. And then really what we're talking about tonight is, is, is there anything else that we need as a group? What, what community input do we need to move, move forward? Is there anything else? And I'm about to show you what, what we could ask, but you can think in the back of your mind, is there anything else that we think we need to be, need to be asking? After we finish up the virtual open house, after it concludes on December 3rd, what we'll do is we'll process all that information and then we'll have another joint workshops to provide the feedback to you and we'll have a report that says people said this and that, and here, here are the results of that. Once, once we're in that situation and hear the feedback, then we could have a joint public hearing to see if there is, after the feedback, we can do any revisions and the joint public hearing is really one of the key steps to saying we're about ready to go into the adoption, or, or ready to adopt. Next slide please. So the virtual open house, it's a live 30-minute Zoom presentation. We can integrate that also in, into the city's Facebook. The recorded presentation's gonna be posted on the website and we can show you, we'll show you here, although Erica, you might, we're gonna try to pull it up to show you, but with, with the sharing, it, it may be just a little bit difficult, but anyway, okay, so.
I can share the, the link in the chat, so everyone would be able to.
So we'll share the link in the chat, so everyone could just click on it i- i- if you prefer. And so what we do is, so the recorded presentation's gonna be posted on the website and then the website's gonna include the survey questions for feedback. We'll have hard copies at the city hall, the library and the senior citizen center. So people can pick up a hard copy and fill that out and turn it into, into staff. And then, yes, ma'am.
Daniel, does the,
Sure, sure.
Does your marketing, does your marketing that includes a hard mailer? Mail out direct, mailing, a mail direct piece?
No, no, sir. No, sir, it does not.
Right, thank you.
So we'll, we'll get the, we'll get the surveys back and then we'll prepare a summary report so we can know what the responses were. Next slide please. So the presentation would be an overview of the zoning update. We have zoning 101 in there because we know we're gonna have a lot of people who, who don't know what zoning is. Maybe they've heard a little bit about it, they're, they've maybe protested a case or they've been interested about what a property by them may turn into. That's, that's how we have most of our public involvement with, with, with public and related to zoning. So we'll give them just a, this is what you need to know. Then we'll preview the website with them so they know how to provide feedback and we'll hit the highlights of the zoning. So talk about the document, talk about what zoning districts are and how those are used, what, what the use chart is. So they understand that. And, and of course we'll highlight some of the key development standards. And we have sort of, you know, the accessory buildings, outside storage, things like that. And then we'll also hit on some of the potential future rezonings such as Highland Drive and Merrill, Merrill Avenue. And then of course we'll have questions and answer where anyone on the Zoom can, can either type their responses in there or I think we're probably gonna, they'll all be typed or will they be live questions, Erica?
They would all be, all be typed either through Zoom or through Facebook.
Okay, so the, the responses will be written and then we'll say, you know, Jill has asked, you know, what does, what does zoning mean for single family or something like that? Next slide please.
Hey, Daniel, sorry, one other question here before you go.
Yes, sir.
Mark Cooks again. Hey, I want to go back and you mentioned, you keep mentioning social media and I can appreciate that using social media a lot, but as I mentioned before, I think we're gonna miss some of our audience who normally would participate. And so since we are not doing a direct mail piece, I have known from experience of having meetings that having a large advertisement signs around the city that's attractive, that will get people's attention, tend to say that they will then, they, they will participate by looking at some signage around the city. So, and I had a group of people in a meeting and I asked, how many people saw my Facebook posts? How many people saw this? No said, no hands. How many people saw the signs that we put up around the city? And majority of the room raised their hand. And so if we're looking for a, and we're looking for, we're not looking for a certain number, but we all looking for participation. And I think that would encourage participation since we're not doing direct mail piece.
And when you're saying signs around the city, are you talking like electronic display signs?
No, unfortunately I was talking about the ones that we put up when we were talking about, there's a town hall meeting. We put them on different corners around the city. They're like the, they're like the CLA York signs, could be a little bit larger than that though. Just to encourage participation.
Paul knows, Paul knows what he's talking about, Daniel. They're, they're quite easy to do. We can do those, to go around the city right away.
Okay, they were used it now, it's like our town halls and so forth. We've got those and we can definitely implement the use of those.
Yeah, good point, Mark. Thanks.
Miss Betty has her hand raised.
Thinking about that. Thinking about the ways we can get the word out. And that was, that was, you know, I just wanted to hear exactly what we plan to do to get the word out, you know, that, that gets people attention. And I think marketed on a nail, what I was thinking in terms of, you know, kind of spreading the word, even though we could put it on a city marquee, that's good, great. But is it going to attract the masses? And so, and I think putting it around, you know, around the city, you know, look, advertisement around the city, different corners that wrap around the city. I think we're, we'll get, we'll attract more people.
Yeah, we can do that. Betty, you had your hand up?
Yes, sir. My question was, is there any reason why we can't put the notice in the water bill?
The, the, the timing, the timing might be a little, little off for that. If we were gonna have.
You're right. Yeah, yeah, you're right. It's too late right now. Okay, but I mean, that's a, a good avenue for the future.
Okay, Jeanette, you've got your hand up?
And my question is that we have people that will show up or who will respond when they hear about it who are in the rental home business. And so we need to be able to differentiate, they don't even live here. We had, we've had meetings where they all show up and will tell us, you know, I own, we had, I told us I own 60 rental homes here. Well, quite frankly, his input to me doesn't matter. I mean, he's using his housing stock as a business, not a place to live. And so I'm curious as to how you will differentiate between citizens who live here and have skin in the gang, these are their homes, and people that this is just a business. And, you know, they want to make things as, you know what I'm trying to say, it's easy for their, run their business.
We, we will ask them, them a question and, and we'll show it to you here, here in a second. We will ask them, you know, do they live in Duncanville? Do they work in Duncanville? Do they own a business? Do they live outside the city? And, or they have a different type of interest in Duncanville? And they can check all, all that, all that apply on there. So that, that's really, because, because when we're doing the surveys, one of the things, now the question is like, well, can someone lie on this? Yes, and, you know, could they, but they live in it, when they, they really, really don't. Yes, and there are ways to, to try to set that up, but we're trying to get as much involvement as we can. And the more like barriers that, that, that we put up for, as far as like, where do you live? Put your, put your, put your address here, or, or what's your zip code, or, you know. please provide your name. Because when, when people start seeing that, they don't want the government to track that or the government to know. I just want to fill out this survey on there. And, and typically we try to write it so it, it's splitting the best of both worlds where it's like, none of these should really turn someone off from trying to fill out the survey on here, but it still gives us the information we need to know that, okay, we had, you know, ten percent of the people marked that they live outside the city. You know, let's, let's take a look at those responses or something like that. Now, once again, but, but we can't necessarily confirm that they're telling the truth.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not following you with what the problem is. I'm not following what you're saying. The problem is with asking them where they live. Because I don't want to tell you, see, I don't get that. You want to tell me how to set the codes up, but you don't want to say where you live? It doesn't make sense.
We, we can definitely, we can definitely ask that question. If, 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 if that's of course the direction we want to go, but, but just from, from the surveys and what, what the people in the survey business ha- have, have told us, the, the more that we, we set up, you know, give us your address, sign up for, give us your email, you know, fill out the.
You don't have to have their email.
The identifiable things.
Yeah, yeah, because it also would point out if there was a particular area that had a particular need. But, you know, somebody who lives in Dallas or Capel and owns houses here, I don't care. I mean, what their opinion is about where we live and the code for where we live. And when we talk about like speed bumps in the road, you have to have over fifty percent of the people who live there or who own the property, not rental people that tell you, yes, that's what I want. And so I guess what I'm saying is I don't want someone who is not living here to dictate our code. And whatever we need to do to clarify that, I, I don't care about their input if they don't live here. Because we did, you weren't there, Daniel, but we had a whole lot of them show up and, and they were just, it was a business. It was rental properties. And, I mean, an auditorium full. And, you know, if you live here, that's one thing. If you don't, then you need to tell the person who has the code where you live.
So, so do you think just asking them whether they live in the city or work or are there a, you know, rental, you know, they have rent homes in the city? Do you think, you know, if we just list these out for them to select which ones apply to them? Do you think that will, that will get to sort, sort of the, the, the heart of it?
Maybe, because we just need to be able to discern, you know, which ones actually live here and which ones. Like we had people that stood up and said, well, they didn't want strict code and they didn't want to have to upgrade their houses and they didn't want to, you know, comply with the new ordinance on how they had to upgrade the homes and we just need to be able to differentiate between a business and somebody who lives here. And I don't know how that's, you know, ask for their address. I mean, I guess you could ask if it was a business. I don't know. I don't know how you do it, but I just want to make sure that, that people who were just looking at our city, we even had people that interviewed on committees and said that they had moved here and bought rental homes for a business. And, you know, that's all well and good, but you shouldn't dictate code if you don't live here.
Well, and I think, I think we can add, you know, do they have a rental home in there? And, and we'll, we'll show you a slide here and, and just a few slides that, that ask those questions and I think we can get a little bit more, more into that. So, okay, but, but let, let's go through a few slides and the other questions, then we'll get back to this one if that, that's okay.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Next slide, please. Okay, so we're, we're getting really, really just three topic areas. Next slide, please. So on the survey, we're trying to, yes, th- this is zoning. So why it is important to, to us here on, on the phone call for a lot of people in the public? You know, they're trying to just, what am I concerned about here in the city and, and what's zoning going to do to affect that? So we asked them to rate their concern from, this is my, my least concern to my most concern. And so the questions that we were going to ask them were about ensuring adequate onsite parking or off-street straight parking. So parking, because we heard that from the public input that parking is an issue in my neighborhood. So we want to make sure that, that this is being addressed. Second one is they're requiring compatibility between neighboring uses. So whether this is, you know, landscaping or some type of setbacks, making sure that, that that's important and is a concern or not a concern. Allowing affordable housing options, so, so our, our housing types in there. Promoting environmentally.
What was the requiring compatibility between neighboring uses?
Oh, requiring compatibility between neighboring uses. This is when we look at, you know, when we, when we talk to people, they just want to be sure that their property and whatever's going on around them or close to them is, is compatible. Now, you know, we can address that through landscaping or setbacks or screening, those type of elements, which, which is what we do in the zoning to make sure that those neighboring uses are compatible. But we're asking the public to tell us that this is, this is their, their concern on there or, or it's not a concern to them.
It's kind of broad.
Yeah, Daniel, are, have, in terms of scoring these questions, has this been put through some sort of statistical analysis by some marketing professional? The, the reason I ask that is just because I'm most concerned about, let's say, number four, it doesn't mean by the time I come down to one, I'm least, I'm not really concerned about it. It's, it's, it, it skews that number one to a point where I'm not really concerned, but I am. It's just not as big a deal as it is for number five.
Please, I think.
I'm talking about, you know, Likert scoring in terms of one through five for statistical analysis possible issues. I just don't know that least concern and most concern is the proper nomenclature for this type of question.
And they, they wouldn't be ranking them necessarily like one through five about order them, which one you're most concerned about. I could say I am most concerned level five about the parking one and environmentally friendly development and downtown Duncanville. And I'm going to rate a two for affordable housing options and a one for compatibility. It's not pick your one, two, three, four, five. It's assign one through five to each one of these.
But that's normally way, the way human behavior, looking at the question is this one is laid out.
That's what it says.
Normal human behavior is I'm going to rank them one through five. And if that's not the intent and purpose of it, then this needs to be redone. My, just my opinion.
We, we could separate these into individual questions, so i- i- it's not seen at all at that on the, on the screen at once and, and I know Erica, you had the, and I don't know who is on the screen, I think it click on that link in the survey and show that on their, show that on their screen. I don't know if that's a possibility.
And I would like that requiring compatibility between neighboring uses more specific. That's really broad.
And, and that's, that's one of the things when we get into the, the zoning questions, because we sort of talked about at our last meeting where we dived into or dove into some very detailed policy stuff that most of the public is not going to be too, too concerned about. So we want, we want to have as much participation as we can to get a good brush about what does the public feel about important issues? Without trying to get them too cross-eyed with, with, whoa, this is, this is too much information and I'm, I'm here for five minutes on the website to try to, try to fill this out.
Yes, Daniel, but on.
It's a balancing.
But on the other side, when you say, because they look at it and go, what, you know, what does that mean? And so they don't, they don't register that high because it's so broad and it's ambiguous. And so you say, well, that didn't really matter to them. Maybe it would if you were specific. It might matter to them. It's really broad.
We, we can look into even, even, we can look into refining that more and, and.
Yeah, because what I consider compatible, you might not.
And if we can scroll down on, on the screen here, this is just sort of generally what the, what the rating would sort of look like. So we have here where, where they could go back and, and are, they can come here and rate, you know, how they, they, they think about different elements on there. And so that's what, and then if, if you scroll back up just a little bit, we have some buttons here on the left side where they can watch the entire, where, where they can watch the introduction to zoning. So if they'd like to see that or watch an overview of the process or watch the highlights of, of the draft, draft ordinance. So they'll be wa- watching those and then sort of participating in this, in this vision, vision part. But I think based upon, upon your comments, we can go and, and provide some clarity on these. And then we can look at whether we should call these out as rating in one question or rather splitting, splitting that out some.
So here's my, here's my point looking at this, Erica. So does it, does the way this, now I'm looking at the way the system is configured. Can I actually put in two fives or three fives or is it blocking it?
Nope, they could, they could all be fives.
All right, see that, that's, that's my concern. I think it, as I said, looking at the human behavior, looking at one least concern and five most concern, most people are going to say, I'm going to rank these things one through five and I put a five, I'm not going to be able to put more than one five.
Right, and I think it's especially confusing right now that we have five options. So I can, I can definitely see how, how it would look like that, but we can, we can work on clarifying that.
Okay, or just maybe putting a, something in parentheses that you may choose more than one. So that they say that you don't get blocked out by taking more than one. Okay, thank you.
You can be more specific on what you're talking about on requiring compatibility between neighboring uses.
Yeah, and, and we can provide some examples like is, is landscape, how important is landscaping a concern? Is the setback of a, a building a concern? So we could try to provide that, that clarity that I think, I think you're, you're wanting to see on there. I think we do that. Or we can do that.
Yeah, everything else seems real specific. That one is like, what? It could, it could encompass a lot.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, we'll, we'll revise what, what you see on the screen here. If you don't mind scrolling down on the page a little bit, please. We'll look at that second question. So what we'd be asking people is to, on that second question, please list any suggestions to improve the zoning ordinance or map or in general comments you would like to address during this update. So when someone's watched the video or even if they haven't watched the video, you know, what is important to them? We, we do want this open-ended response where they can say, hey, everything's, everything's great. Or this is my biggest concern or here's my list of five things that I want you to know. And so we can document those, see if there's any consistent themes that, that are new coming up or confirming what we already know on some of the previous input that we've had. Then the third one, getting back to, you know, how do we, how do we know who is taking the poll? And, you know, do they have a vested interest in the city? You know, is it their home? We'd be asking them, number three here, which of the following describes you? Check all that applies. So, because I could live in the city and I could work in the city or maybe I just live here or maybe I just work here. You know, I can own a business here. Maybe I just, you know, live, live outside and, and that really, so I work in Duncanville and I, but I live outside. And our last one is, you know, I have a different type of, type of interest. So I think we can add, you know, you know, do you own rental property in the city? So that could be one that, that we, we put on there. So, so I think we could add that to sort of help address the concern. Because if, if, you know, we've had, you know, the rental community coming out and providing input, you know, that way you could see. Now, the, the one question is, you know, do, do people check the correct box on there? And so with all the, all the surveys, it, it's difficult to, of course, make sure that someone's going to tell the truth on there, even if we have them submit their name and address, you know, or if they submit an address, you know, is that really their address in there? Are they just picking some address on there? So, so I, I think our, our goal is to get as much broad participation as we can. And I think if, if we're adding another box here, I think we can get to the, to the rental. But we, we can change it too, to ask them to provide a, a street address or a zip code that they live in. Please provide the zip code that you live in. So that's not as much of, you know, I don't think too many people would be concerned about that because it's not their specific address on there. So, so I, i- if we want to try to pinpoint or drill down a little bit more, we can on there. But we can definitely add a box for, for, you know, I have rental property in Duncanville.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that. And then when you give us the findings from your work, you'll differentiate between who lives here and who just owns rental property or who just has.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have the summary for you all perfect.
So you will know, Daniel, we want to encourage people to live here. We're not encouraging people to buy rental houses. We have found that, 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 that's what makes good cities, good neighborhoods. People that live here and get involved. As far as their opinion, when they don't live here, we're really hard to care about that, if you don't want to live with us.
Yeah.
Hey, Daniel, where are we?
And well, then we are here, here really, if we could go back to the, we're, we're really at the end. We're really at the end of the presentation because we just went through this question. Next slide, please. We, we already talked about two, that's the open-ended question, number three. Our next slide, please. We talked about modifying this. Next slide, please. And that's just a summary. Next, next slide, please. No new information on that slide. And so that, that's it. That, that really gets us to what we need to fine tune in the ordinance itself. If you, and if you go back to the website real quick, we will.
Well, what was that, what was that previous, the previous?
Sure, sure.
Not that one, the next one.
Oh, going back, the previous slide was just, it was just a summary of the, it was just a summary of the questions that, that we asked. Rate your level of concern.
Which of the following describes you?
Yes, and, and that's, that's the, that's the checkboxes we were just talking about adding. Yeah, yeah. And if we swat, swit- switch back to the website, please, sorry. I can talk. If you scroll back up to the top, there's a couple of tabs where we'll have, so people can go click on, you know, the documents tab if they want to look at the whole document. So we'll have that up there for people to download. Existing ordinance, the existing map, the conference of plan, it'll all be, all the important planning documents will be right there. If you click on the meetings tab, we'll have that there so they can see all the, all the different meetings that, that have gone on. See all the presentations from previous meetings, if they'd like to do that. So that they're all in there. And if you scroll back up to the top one more time, and then the last tab is for anyone, if they were just wanting to submit any open comment whatsoever, and if you click on that, please. So they'd be able to submit that. And this one, we do ask for a. Uh, and this one, we do ask for a, a name and email address, so at least we can be able to respond to them uh in there. So, and that, and that, that is optional on there, and so they could choose not to do it. But, but really, that's it. Uh, we'll, we'll make the changes that, that we talked about today. We'll make the modifications. But if, if you guys think that, that we're good to go and have the, the. Virtual open house next Thursday and proceed with that two-week open period uh and, and the sort of the schedule that we outlined in the presentation. Uh, uh, that, that's really the direction we need to know tonight if we're, we're good to proceed.
Uh, yeah, Daniel, I think uh the, the plan looks, looks good and it's well thought out. And having it open for two weeks gives everybody a pretty good chance going through the holiday itself. So, well done. So any, uh, there are no closing comments, no hands raised. So I can see anything. Uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn and, but Greg, in terms of your folks from P and Z, any closing comments from P and Z folks?
Any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the, the added pictures and things like that, the help with the examples. I think that was very good. And um. In the PowerPoint slide, I don't know if any of the other panel members have any other comments. Hearing none, so.
Okay, I'll take that as, as a negative. So I'm looking at my timestamp. Um, we are adjourning our city council meeting at seven thirty-two.
And we can adjourn the planning and zoning meeting at seven thirty-two as well.
Thanks to all. Have a good, safe evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.